I'd like to be able to answer my constituents about what rumor is.
Item seven and eight.
I agree with Mr. General.
Where's Kippee at? Kippee knows.
Ms. Babers, you got any information on item seven and eight?
Um, yes. So those, um, ECON consultant solution contracts are not specifically for, um, for the stadium. As you know, economic development, they need assistance as it relates to marketing, to the developers, the various developers that we are trying to attract. So that's what that is. That's why you also see marketing and then marketing studies.
Is this a new firm to the city?
It is.
All right. Any other question? You got your explanation? Seven and eight?
I don't know about that, but...
Yeah, keep guessing.
I have the contracts. If y'all want to look at the contracts. I have the contracts here.
May I ask a question, Mr. President? Can they just get the contract and review what they're looking at?
She's got it right here.
Yeah.
Seems like it has something about...
I will look at it. This is our work test, so we can get...
Ms. Beer, didn't you see something on there?
Yeah, but I walked off and looked at that thing. Let me see it, then. Which number are you looking at, Charles?
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight.
I got it. I got it.
No, it wasn't that one.
One more?
Thank you.
ECON consult. Both of those, ECON consult.
Downtown retail strategy.
If you're...
Retail strategy only.
Yeah, it's, it's...
On seven. Proposal to conduct a convention center expansion market study. That's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
That's number... What is this number?
This one's seven.
What is this? Eight?
Seven and eight.
Hang on a minute. I gotta get my stuff.
No. Okay, if I can make a correction, I just was able to pull up my, um, the documents here. And seven is a, um, a marketing study to look at the feasibility of a convention center as well as to expanding our current, um, convention center.
And eight, it has the same effect?
Well, you know what?
It's like, uh, this was thirty-five thousand and it's...
Mr. President, the problem I have is we're doing a study and I don't even know what we're, what we're planning on doing.
Well, this right here, the study says proposal to conduct a convention center expansion market study. That's pretty explicit about what it means.
Okay.
Expansion to the convention center, expansion of market study for the extension. Now, whatever that expansion is, I hear rumors every day in the city, but I don't know anything about it. That's the first time I've seen that.
So, do we mean to expand the impact? What do we mean?
Well, I think the reality of it, we got these in front of us. We need to make sure we use them properly and we know what's going on. Uh, but we get the rumors. I mean, I know you get rumors, I get rumors every day. People say, Charlie, don't you know what's going on downtown? Apparently I don't, because this is a study for the expansion of the convention center. Okay? See, I'm gonna say it.
All right.
I'm good.
Any other questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mitchell.
I guess the question, are we, we opposing the, the study or just not knowing about...
I just didn't know. I mean, I keep hearing there's gonna be one, but I don't know what it is.
Well, what, I guess, are we studying to expand the current impact or what?
Yeah.
Expansion sounds like we're expanding something.
Expansion. That's what, that's what the contract says.
So, looking at the feasibility to, to expand the current. And by expansion, we don't know if that's gonna end up being to expand it where it currently is or to expand it in another location.
It's about, it's about, excuse me, but it's about a new center of some kind to be built in Montgomery. And we hear rumors every day, there's one going to happen, but we've never seen anything until I saw the piece of paper here that says an expansion of the convention center. Okay? That tells me what we're talking about, and that's all I'm asking. And now I know by being to look at this, I know about that. I wouldn't normally have known about it if I hadn't seen this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Next item.
Item twelve, ordinance amending ordinance number thirteen dash two thousand and three for the property located at seventeen forty Raythorington Road to remove the restrictions.
All right.
This was carried over August of the year.
So we're gonna have another public hearing on this?
No, sir, we don't have to.
We already had a public. So it's just a vote. All right. Any questions on item twelve? I know you guys got about two, three hundred emails.
Absolutely.
Everybody's gotten covered up. I was under the impression that the, uh, excuse me, Mr. President, but that the proposer was going to have a meeting with the homeowners association to try to have some compromise. And to my knowledge, what all I've seen on these emails, there's no compromise.
All right. And that, that's, that's what we carried it over for, for them to have a meeting, get a compromise.
They did have the meeting. They did have the meeting.
They did have the meeting.
It just, I don't think it went well.
Must not went well, right?
I don't think it did.
All right. Somebody didn't tell the story.
All right. We'll vote on it tonight. Right. Next item.
Thirteen, hearing on proposed ordinance rezoning one hundred and eighty acres located at fifty-seven thirty-three Norman Bridge Road from an Ag one district to an M, that should be an M one district.
Senator PJ, Ms. Rob.
Um, I'm good with it. Um, they supposed to come at five o'clock.
All right. Next item.
Fourteen, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute contracts without council approval.
All right. We already had discussions on those, so we're voted up and down tonight in the meeting or vote for an amendment.
Item fifteen, application for lounge retail liquor class two package license doing business is liquor factory fifteen oh seven South Decatur Street.
Mr. Semens, you carried it over two weeks and you have a meeting that you got ahead of or what were we at?
Yeah, the, uh, item is gonna end up being carried over. The business is changing the liquor license. Uh, they're going from a liquor, a package store to, uh, retail beer and wine. Um, and so they're meeting with the neighborhood associations to discuss that proposal. Uh, so I guess we'll just table it indefinitely because we can't amend that.
You can amend the resolution.
Yeah, so we'll end up tabling it indefinitely till they have that meeting with the neighborhood associations.
All right.
Item sixteen, resolution imposing a six-month moratorium on the issuance of lounge liquor class one license and lounge liquor package class two license with the city of Montgomery.
Mr. Mitchell.
Um, Mr. President, I, um, I thought we would get a clear, um, copy of tho- those, um, liquor stores that's in, um, the lives in everybody district. Only thing that we are looking at, we're just trying to do, I think the, I have been here, we did a twenty twenty plan, we did a twenty forty plan, and we about to do a, a, a twenty sixty plan. I just don't think that encompass all the, the liquor stores and the package stores that we are seeing in the city of Montgomery. Not only that, but you're seeing, if you ride down the boulevard, you see more wean spots, more. So I just wanna get a handle on what we're seeing and that's with the business that we're attracting to the city of Montgomery. So I'm just asking for a study that, that shows the, the hours that they should be operating, um, the days they should be operating. I just want to see that it is conducive to the neighborhoods and the people that we are serving here in the city of Montgomery with this moratorium.
Mr. Mitchell, Mr. President, just wanting the clarification, because I believe in the conversations that we have, and it hasn't been updated on the agenda. So I'm just pointing out that there is the lounge liquor class one licenses and the liquor, lounge liquor package class two licenses. Totally on board to have the debate about lounge liquor package, uh, the class twos, and I assume that that's what this is going forward. Is there a way we can amend that so it's clear to the public?
When, when we get in a regular meeting, you can make a motion to adopt and then a motion to...
I just wanted to clean that up, yeah.
Mr. President, 'cause this is off-premise owners. This is not anything on-premise. It's, we're looking at off-premise.
All right. So nothing with restaurants, bars.
No, sir.
Mr. President, Stacy, can we do this legally? Can we do this legally?
Yes.
We can?
Yes. We can pass along. Legal.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Seventeen, ordinance renaming Capital Commerce Boulevard to Alpha Drive.
No problem. She has any problem?
All right. Next item.
Eighteen, application for restaurant retail liquor license doing business as South Fork at twenty-nine ninety-eight Carter Hill Road.
All right. Mr. Semens.
No issues on this item.
Is that the old steakout?
It's the old Panera Bread.
Okay.
In that shop in there. It's a franchise out of, I think it's Plano, Texas, but I did alert the, uh, neighborhood association closest to the location.
All right.
Nineteen, application for restaurant liquor license doing business as Mon Chan, twenty-eight oh one Von Plaza Road, Sweet Tea.
Wait, I wasn't hearing it that time.
Item twenty, application for lounge retail class one license doing business as Crush Bar, seventy-nine Commerce Street.
I'm carrying it over one more, um, meeting. I meet with the owner on the tenth, and once I meet with her and see what her plans are, then, um, I'll go ahead and take it up for a vote.
Thanks. Also, uh, been advised that one of the owners owes us some sales tax on another account.
Say it again?
Owner owes us some sales tax on another account.
So she needs to contact you all?
Yes.
You said she owes sales tax. Okay.
And bring cash.
All right.
Item twenty-one, resolution appointing William Boyd to the housing authority.
All right.
Twenty-two, resolution reappointing Bernice Robertson to the water and sewer board. Twenty-three, resolution assessing the cost of abatement of unsafe structures at various locations. Twenty-four, resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lots.
Okay. All right. Anyone have any question? Any council having anything for getting the public communication?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mitchell.
Um, and I, I want the council, I know we, we, um, we had an incident downtown and through that incident, we pretty much shut downtown. I just got a call that C.C. Daughery has closed down once again, um, due to the council shutting down downtown. And I just want us to revisit, um, opening up back downtown. I know we have, um, Turkey Day coming back into the city of Montgomery. Birmingham had over two hundred thousand people in the city of Birmingham. Um, if Birmingham can, can manage two hundred thousand, I don't see why the city of Montgomery can't handle. Probably Turkey Day, you might have maybe fifty thousand folks here in the city of Montgomery, and most of those people will be staying downtown. I just want us to consider, um, putting a strategic plan in place, um, 'cause without a plan, you have nothing. And right now, we absolutely have nothing. We are shutting down. And I hear the president talk about all the time about small business. We are pro-business here in the city of Montgomery. We cannot be if we're putting people out of business. And I hate that C.C. Daughery is going back out of business for the second time. And I just want the council to really look at opening up back downtown with a strategic plan in place to make sure that people that's visiting the city of Montgomery is protected and safe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just wanted to respond. Thank you, Councilor Mitchell, but, um, District Three is working with the entertainment district, and we are working on something, and we will introduce it, um, in the upcoming meetings. And it is a plan, it's the continuance of that district, of the entertainment district, um, with protocol that we put together with A B C Board and with the state and with the LIA. So we are working on a plan, and we do have a plan. So it is not that we don't have one, it's just that it has not been shared with the greater general council as it is not prepared to be just yet, council.
Yeah, Mr. President, and I did see the, the, the policy that the A B C Board put in place, which I don't think is...
They just copied the one we had.
Yeah, but you can't buy ice from the liquor store, but you can buy ice to carry from the, the restaurant. Uh, first of all, that's, that's, won't be able to be enforceable 'cause you telling me I can't buy ice from the li- the, the package store, but I can go right to the restaurant, buy the same ice in the, the gold cup and walk around. So I just think that, um, we can do a little better than, than what they put in place. I just wanna see the city back open so people can enjoy downtown that we put so much emphasis on downtown. Thank you, Mr. President.
I do want the general public to know and the council to know, downtown isn't closed. Uh, and, and we've stressed that through marketing, we've stressed that to our downtown business owners, and they are actively engaged, they are actively working their businesses. It is very unfortunate what happened to C.C.'s, but during those same weekends following what happened downtown, many of our downtown businesses actually sold out. They made their dollars that they needed to make through marketing efforts with Main Street Montgomery, with the Chamber of Commerce, and with the city of Montgomery working with them to extend and push out their marketing efforts. Downtown has never been closed. We paused the downtown entertainment district. We never closed. All businesses are still open, they're still operating minus our unfortunate miss of the C.C.'s Daughery. But we will still continue to promote and continue to visit, and I, I ask that the public continue to come downtown. We've had multiple events from the city to other outside event planners coming in, doing business. We will never close downtown for a few bad actors. I want to make sure that is stressed. It has never been closed.
Mr. President.
It is open for business. Please come shop, spend your money, enjoy time, and have a good time with your family.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mitchell.
If you talk to any business downtown, they, they, talk to them about their la- talk to them about, talk to them about their last quarter. The last quarter is very, last quarter is very important to any business. As a business owner myself, I know how valuable the last quarter of the year is. Talk to any business downtown. Andrew, uh, don't you, can I talk to the business owner? Andrew, do you have a business in that area? Tell me about your, your, how's your quarter going, mister?
All right. Talk about what we need to do.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. But we're talking about, we gotta make sure, when we say that they're open, we gotta make sure that they are doing what needs to be done. And the foot traffic is not there downtown right now.
Our, our counselor, our businesses meet, the businesses meet on a regular basis, monthly, and we talk. And matter of fact, as I can say for myself personally, I'm always downtown, and I'm enjoying the downtown scenery. Many of the council members have been downtown. We've seen each other in passing. We've spent our money. Downtown still has traffic. The, we just recently had an event with the city, the Fall Festival. We had trunk or treat. The businesses, all of the businesses were engaged with Halloween trick or treat just recent. The Biscuit Stadium. We are always doing business downtown. And the businesses are always communicating with the city and the chamber. We always meet. This is on a regular basis. This didn't just start because something happened downtown. Businesses are always meeting. There's a downtown business association, there's a Main Street Montgomery, there's the Chamber of Commerce. We are constantly, there's the Alabama Retail Association, there's the Alabama Hotel Association. We are always meeting with the businesses downtown. I just don't want that to be, uh, any confusion that we don't speak to the businesses.
Well, thank you for that.
Mr. President.
We just wanna make sure that we get the downtown entertainment district back open going in the polls. So I look forward to what you got and committed that you gonna bring before this council for a vote. Mr. Grant?
Mr. President, could I ask the chief, we, we are inundated, chief, right now with people riding around with no car tags. Are we picking, are we picking, stopping any of these people because...
Chief, you need it, you need it.
I left here last week and rode downtown, and in five miles, I saw five or six people with no tags. They're not all new cars. There's no way.
When we encounter, we do stop them and ticket them, we've issued quite a significant amount of violation tickets in relation to no tags. So when our units are out there, we are doing and are enforcing traffic violations. So, uh, one thing we are doing as well, though, is with expanding our camera coverage, as we see more things like that, we can move patrol units as needed to doing more of that.
When you stop them, are you finding they have insurance also? Y'all checking for insurance?
Yeah, we check for insurance. We check for making sure that their license is current, making sure they have current insurance. I mean, basically, there are certain basics that every stop has to encounter, and we write tickets for all violations.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
All right. Thank you, chief.
Uh, before we move into our public communication, I wanna recognize, uh, Mr. Ron Sparks, former actuary commissioner, that's sitting in our audience today. Welcome, sir. Thank you.
Good day.
He get downtown. All right. On our public communications roster today, we have Mr. Bob Taylor to talk uptake on business license and procedures.
How y'all doing? Scroll that down. Y'all have a copy of this, too, on y'all's desk. I put it up there. Um, basically what this is, is some key renewal dates, details regarding the upcoming business license renewal season. You see coming up November fourteen, the final date to make any changes to business license account, meaning addresses, entity name, account, uh, adds, deletes, whatever, with the, uh, the twenty-nine renewal notice comes out in the mail. Renewal notices are gonna be mailed to active license holders. Uh, this is in accordance with our ordinance. And that's gonna be going out sometime between middle and end of December. Uh, just so everybody knows, your twenty-twenty-five business license expires December thirty-one. Now, we give, uh, everybody an extra month to renew without any penalty. This year, the cutoff date before penalties are set will be on February the second. Uh, on February the third, penalties was, in interest will start accruing, rate of fifteen percent penalty. Penalty amount goes to thirty percent on March the third. You will see that there are renewal options, how they can, people can renew in person. They can come to our office at twenty-five Washington Avenue. We're on the third floor. We take, uh, in-person renewals between seven thirty a.m., three thirty p.m., Monday through Friday. We can do it by mail. You have our mailing address there, P O Box fifty-seventy. It has to be postmarked by February second to be considered on time. You can do it over the phone as well. Our phone number is there. We're available seven thirty to four thirty to take phone calls. We can add, you can do a credit card renewal, but we must have all your documents in order to do that. And be advised also, there's going to be a service fee of two and a half percent plus thirty cents on any credit card transactions. Next page. Contractors, you know contractors like to get their, um, permits and all, so they kinda get a little bit of a priority. That's the mailing address. It's basically the same address, the P O Box fifty-seventy. Please notate, though, on your envelope that it is for contractor applications. Some other reminders, please keep in mind, business license applications will be processed in the order received. You're not going to get it expedited by calling the mayor's office, calling the council, Ms. Beville's office, Ms. Playlock's office, three-one-one, or other ones, because we process them in the order received. So that kind of, those that have sent theirs in earlier puts them to the back of the line. Please also notate that if you owe sales taxes, your taxes must be current to be at your license renewed. Also, all regulatory license information must be submitted with the application where applicable. There's only about a hundred and fifty different kinds of regulatory licenses and occupations in the state of Alabama. And it should be noted also that fee schedules, you see a link there, that will be available on the website, so you can do your calculations for your business licenses. It should be noted, too, that this handout will also be posted on the website, city's website.
Bob, Ms. Bob. Bob, uh, two questions.
All right.
Is this already live online? If someone went right now while they're watching the council?
It's not live online yet.
When will it be live?
This schedule is online.
It, that's what I'm asking.
It will be online, yes.
As of tonight or tomorrow?
As of tonight.
Tonight. And secondly, I, from my understanding, this just kinda made me self-understood, but I know last year when we were doing renewals, from my understanding, we were waiting for you all to transition into a new system so people can begin renewing online. Is that still not an option?
Not this year. The software system we were going to convert to, that project has been abandoned.
Oh, goodness.
We found out that the software was just not gonna be able to be compatible with what we needed it to do, and it would have been, quite frankly, another nightmare situation. We are in the process, though, of looking at other software systems.
Mr. President?
Mr. Semens.
So, without, we're not gonna have the online option. When a business goes to this link here, they're gonna get their fee schedule, so that'll have the specific amount for the amount of money that they'll be sending in for their license.
Right.
And so...
Shows you how to do the calculations.
So they'll, they'll calculate it themselves. So in the past, they would have gotten the, the postcard that said, this is how much you owe?
No. What it is, they always send the schedule. In the past, the schedules were printed on the back. This year, we're just doing it with the link.
Okay. So no postcards this year?
No postcards.
Okay.
Mr. Bob, can we have your department send this to our email, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can I ask one question?
Yes, Ms. Rob.
Do you know if we're gonna look at a way for them to start paying online? Because I know a lot of people are inconvenienced to try to leave their business to come down and do renewals when they wanna do them online. So are we gonna look at another system?
Yes.
Do you know when we're gonna look at it?
We're in the process of looking now, ma'am.
This, this, the county processes these online, if I understand it correctly.
Have you...
So we know a system that does work. It's being done right here, essentially in our jurisdiction.
Yeah.
It is, and that, look, I understand that there may be snafus. I just, you know, it is incredibly frustrating for us as business owners, if we are one, or us as counselors up here. After last year's, I mean, I'd say it was a bit of a debacle.
And I certainly agree with that, Councilman.
And, and, and I think we would make the resources available, whatever it took, to try and get this right. I mean, we talk about smart cities and being innovative and being modern and having these things, and we now have three methods, in person, by mail, and by phone, for business licensing. I don't, I'm not trying to pile on, but I'm just saying, after what happened last year, it is very frustrating to know that we're essentially could find ourselves in a similar position with this timeline and schedule. And with people, we should be making it easy to do business here, and I think this does not.
So let me, um, respond to what you're saying right there. First of all, uh, it was actually in the current year, we extended, uh, the period of being able to purchase a business license up to some point in the month of April. And we did that with less than half of the staff we would normally have, because people retired, other people took, uh, various jobs. And they have other functions they have to do in addition to being able to sell a business license, okay? And some of the staff over there are fairly new. Uh, there are a lot of laws that you have to be, uh, trained about in order to be able to sell a business license, to be able to sell the type of business license that the, uh, person is wanting to purchase. And so with that having been said, it was not possible trying to fill positions that were vacant. And now we have a total of, what, about eighteen, seventeen, eighteen people onboard, and we're still interviewing for vacant positions to get additional people in there. But you remember, they have to be trained, okay? And so here we are with a software system that we looked at, and these were, uh, people that were in the management positions prior to Bob being appointed as manager of the revenue and license division, okay? So he was not involved in that process. Those people have, uh, retired. We looked at the munis system because we thought it would work. The county at the time was using New World, which is also a, uh, Tyler Technology product. Uh, and they were also going to use munis, and they had to kick it aside as well. And they're looking at something else. So, uh, giving us a little bit more time, you just can't make it happen, you know, instantaneously when you don't have the people to process the day's, um, tasks that you have to get done and then learn a new software system. We're getting into our business license season, and we knew it was gonna be a total debacle if we had gone with munis software. The functionality was not as good as what we have with our current system called Nordico. And so with that being said, we're in the process of looking at other software systems for, uh, the business license module. And hopefully, uh, as soon as we get out of this, uh, peak season of business license, the first quarter of the year, we'll be able to invest more time... the first quarter of the year, we'll be able to invest more time and have the people onboard to be able to do that. So, I, we just ask for a little patience, because we are working night, days, and weekends.
Mr. President?
Ms. uh, Johnson.
Ms. Beville, thank you so much for that. I, I, and, and I do understand that the county license are a little bit different than a city, um, and Bob, I know we be on you, and people be on us a lot about the licensing and how long it took last year. So, just to get ahead of things, we want it easier for the public, and we want to make sure you taking the proper necessary steps to do that, so, and that we do it sooner than later. So, my question is, I know that you have to have so many things to do licensing, but when it comes to software and the transition, I know we can't speak for those that were before you, but now, are you working with the chief technology officer to make sure that, that technology and what you need are working together, and y'all are working as a team across departments?
Most definitely, that's a department that's under my oversight, and we have staff meetings every other week, and we talk about all of the things that we know we gotta get done, and, uh, trying to make that happen as soon as possible, sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Beville?
Yes.
I wanna just say one thing, uh, with today's technology and the, and the Chinese and everybody hacking, we want you to get a good system, because Windstream went down Friday, you couldn't go in Regent's Check Max, uh, Guardian, you couldn't cash a check, and it's probably a hack, and it's, it's happens every week somewhere, guys. I mean, there are people are talking about moving off, the banking system off the internet, it's, we can't protect it with the AI viruses. So, you make sure that you take your time and get the right system.
And we are, no need to worry, as the fiduciary, that's my responsibility, okay? Protect the assets of the city. All right, thank you.
Mr. President?
Any other questions?
Yeah, it's, um, Miguel here?
I'm sorry?
Can we put this out on the city website and everything, so everybody knows?
Oh, yes, it's going up tonight.
Okay, for clarity, for clarity.
Hold on, one at a time, one at a time.
It's on, it's on the site right now.
Hold on, Ms. Beville, you finished, Ms. Johnson?
Okay, I wasn't finished yet.
I mean, Ms.
Okay, I wasn't finished.
You finished?
So, just to make sure that, you know, it's on the city website, and maybe we need to do a, an education piece, um, on WSFA, um, WAKA, maybe y'all go on.
Well, we can look into that, and the version that's on the site now is not the final version.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
It's not the correct version, as far as the notice, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So, that will be going up, what you all see up there on that screen.
Right, and I just, even on social media and that kinda thing, just so make, to make sure that we've done our due diligence to get everything out to the, um, the public.
As much as we have the time to do, but like, because I see it, we're working days, nights, and weekends.
That's why I asked if Miguel through communications could handle it, you know, because that way, that's his lane, and maybe he could get that education piece out for the, the communities.
Well, thank you, we appreciate your, uh, recommendation.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Beville?
I'm just trying to clarify that that information is currently right now on our website. You can pull it up just like I just did.
All right.
We've made some changes, though, so it's not 100%.